Due to MLEA, they are no longer going to be offering things like CPR first aid. They won't be training on key control and they won't be training on plant policy and procedure. That will be up to the entity themselves, which makes perfect sense. It's hard for them to generalize on those types of things. And then on first aid CPR, they're not going to be giving first aid CPR anymore because of recertification efforts. Throughout the state, it could be the Heart Association, it could be the American Red Cross. There are several entities that certify officers throughout the state. So they've determined that it's easiest to have the officers certified before they show up at the academy and then recertify with the same organization that they used in the beginning. Okay? So those are the things that have changed as far as the standards go. Along with that, we are putting together boilerplate policy and procedure for any county facility to use as they see fit. One of the things that I've noticed in touring the state is the wide variety of policy and procedure if there is good policy for the procedure that is being used, especially in some of the smaller environments. Like, one of the ones that comes to mind is out in Petroleum County. Okay, well, we have a 72-hour hold versus a full-on facility. There are going to be certain nuances, but they still need to have that policy in place. So that's one of the things that I and Mako are offering up. Hopefully, I'll have it done by November. We'll see how much time I actually get to sit down and write. Okay? Along with that, we are working with the MSPOA on providing peer inspections of county facilities. Now, it should be something that you folks are familiar with. However, over the last few years, there have been far and few between as far as the peer reviews themselves. So my goal is, is to get them up and running to the point where every facility here in the state receives a peer review at least every three years. Ideally, that will help us with some of the issues that we're having along the lines of, say, the ACLU. Okay? Potential for liability law claims or any losses that may be associated with that. And if anything else, it's always good to have some fresh sets of eyes that come into a facility and they come from a peer rather than from someone that's a layperson that doesn't necessarily understand the operations or the procedural methods of that particular facility. Okay? So on the jail side of things, we're making ground. We're slowly getting there, but it looks like this will be our year. If you're real familiar with the Montana jail standards, it's been ebbing and flowing since the mid-1970s. So it's 2013, it's time that we step up and get her done. And one of the things that we at Mako are looking at is for counties that do adopt and follow the procedures, we'll be looking at rate reductions, if you will, similar to what Amelia does on the workers' comp side of things. We'll put into place a similar mechanism to be able to audit to make sure that you're getting full credit for doing what you need to on the jail standards or any policy and procedure, training mechanisms, which on that side of things, I've already made contact with and setting up accounts with the National Institute of Corrections for county jails throughout the state so that we can get free training through the NIC, which they've always offered. However, it hasn't been taken advantage of. So I will be helping and assisting with that as well so that we can make sure that people do receive the suicide awareness or maybe just standard meds or dispersment of tools, that type of training that should be ongoing in a jail environment. On the other side of things that I do are things like your roads departments. And one of the things that I've looked at the most is the losses that each of the counties have faced. And every county without any deviation has two greatest exposures. And they are the two groups that are out on the roads the most, the sheriff's department and the roads department. That's where our exposures come from on the liability side of things. Yes, every once in a while, we get a windstorm or a hailstorm or something on that order that does damage to building and/or vehicles. We can't really handle that one too much, you know? We can't say go around it. So what we can do is train folks and come out and do audits. So that's one of the things that you should be expecting from me in the next few weeks is an action plan for your particular county based on losses that have happened in the last five years.
Excellent.
Those losses are going to be the predetermining factor on what I train on and what I suggest training on. In addition to that, what I am going to do is take your schedule of vehicles and equipment and put together tailgate meetings for the people that will be using those tailgate meetings on specific pieces of equipment instead of general topics. When we talk about an end loader, quite often it's usually an end loader instead of maybe a case end loader or a Huff end loader or a John Deere. And then we'll get it downright to the specifics for that piece of equipment for the people that use it. With that being said, that will be added to our update of our loss control manual that Amelia and I will be working on this winter. So we've got a lot of stuff planned for you as far as the loss control side of things go. My particular history in loss control has been the last 22 years running my own business and working for self-insured risk management groups. So I know specifically what you folks are up against, being self-insured, the nuances that it takes as far as making sure that we're hitting everything that we need to hit, and the realization that your dollars are real dollars when it comes to insurance dollars. It's not insurance dollars, as a lot of people like to call it. Well, insurance will pay for it anyway. Well, the fact of the matter is, it hits your budget and it hits it very deeply if things go awry. So my job is, is to make them not go awry. And quite frankly, I've been in the business for almost 28 years now and I take it personally if people get hurt or do damage on my watch. And I let them know that when I go out to train people as well. Because the reality is, is we're all here to provide a service and the best way we can provide that service is safely and cost-effectively.
So Jim, do we have a new safety officer? Well, it's one, two, two new ones are working as a team.
Great.
Would they get in contact with you?
They will. I will be in contact with them as well.
I will get you their phone numbers and names.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful. The more interaction I can have, the better. My goal right now is to be out at least every four months to each particular county providing training and/or audits. If I can do it quarterly, I will do it quarterly. It's going to depend on the weather during the wintertime. And it's also going to depend on which direction I get pulled as far as things that are going on in Mako. But they already know that I feel like my time is best spent out in the field dealing with county personnel, not sitting in the office in Helena. And they're well aware of that already, so that's a nice thing.
We like hearing that.
Yes, I'm glad you do. Typically with my great acquaintance who I like to ask you folks what you'd like to see from me, since you haven't had anyone in my capacity for the last couple of years. If you have anything in particular, that'd be great. If there's anything that ever comes up in the future, please let me know, especially if there is a series of events, whether it's equipment that's having issues or a particular area in the county that's having issues. I like to go out and spend some time with the people that are having those types of issues. On the workers' comp side of things, what I tend to do, and I call it a come-to-Jesus meeting, which is, is if we have an individual that has multiple claims and they continue to have the same type of claim, I'll sit down with them and you folks and their supervisor to find out what we can do for them because apparently we're not providing what we're supposed to be able to provide. Quite often, a lot of people look at it on the other side of things, that it's the employee that's doing things wrong. Well, it may not be the right tools that they have, could be improper training, it may not be a clear dialogue that they have. So anytime that I can spend trying to clear that up, the better off things are.
That sounds good.
Good.
Yeah? Do you have anything Franklin?
No, really don't. I'm sure the things, once you get started, there'll be...
Oh, yeah.
...just things come up.
You know, one of the folks over in Judith Basin goes, "Well, you seem enthusiastic. We'll see how long that lasts." I've already been over there and done two safety trainings for him and he still thinks I'm enthusiastic, so we're on the right track.
Very good. We, what we could use is a little bit more hands-on.
Yeah.
And we've had back issues. So I think maybe both those things, and again, getting you in touch with Brian and Mike, I think would be a great step for them.
Sure.
As well as getting you here and seeing what's going on and meeting all of our folks as well.
And just so you know, everybody in the country has problems with back issues. It's one of those things. That's the red herring in the group, I guess, you know? Unfortunately, we being human beings and we like starchy fatty foods, we don't take care of our backs all that well. And that's where it all starts, plus a lot of sitting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, very good. I will cut this short since I know that you are running behind and it was a pleasure to meet you.
I have a comment. I want to speak to him directly.
You have four strikes going right now. Be civil and I will let you ask him a question.
Jim, my name's John Wright.
Hi, John.
I have served case history of United States Court of Appeals Constitutional Supreme Court against one Nellie B. Sayer, which apparently our commissioners have not followed through with it because now they're charged with the same crime. Now, and this, all of this affects Mako and you.
Uh huh.
And this packet, even including the sheriff serving it, which our sheriff right back here confirmed it, it was served on the county and other specified. It's been totally ignored because of complications. Two of the commissioners are a part of this pack. Carla Bosi, which is our county attorney, is one of them, and then our clerk of the records. This is a direct violation of a case before the United States Court of Appeals, 937021. Now, this packet is being officially and personally served on you right now. And you will have 10 days to respond to this in writing, and I want you to respond to our sheriff, not to the commissioners. Mr. Slifka has been vindicated because he responded accordingly correctly. Now, with all that said and done...
John, if you want to give him the documents, give him the documents.
You, within 10 days...
I'm letting you know that he has to do with a whole different ball of wax.
Doesn't make no difference. He's the ambassador of Mako and I've called their company and I can't even get a return call or response.
You can give it to him and he can give it to his legal sources.
Okay, and that's exactly what I will do.
As you see, these are the documents.
John, go ahead and go ahead and take...
And you are the witnesses.
Okay, and I, on the record, will accept these.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's not carry this on.
Well, it's way overdue.
Okay. You have anything else for me, John?
No, sir.
Okay. It was a pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you for coming.
You bet. Take care.
All right, it is 11:40. Next on our agenda, we have examining land surveyor discussion and possible decision. Hello, Nicole.
Hi. So I have costs for services from both of the examining land surveyor packets we received, one from Stuart Nash and one from Don Schaber. So Stuart Nash says that he proposes an hourly rate of $80 per hour. Don Schaber proposes a standard fee of $125 per COS plus a $25 per tract review fee. I talked to Stuart about possibly giving us a comparison in a per-lot fee. My reasoning for that was I want to be sure that the county is being reimbursed for these COSs before we're actually paying these examining land surveyors. Basically, when someone comes into my office with a survey, say they have two lots, I can look at it and say, "This is two lots. Your review fee is going to be X amount of dollars." With an hourly fee, I can't tell them how long that's going to take for review. But Stuart felt that he wanted to keep it at an hourly fee. When I talked to him, he said it would just be difficult to know how to charge a per-lot fee. So, all right, that's where we're at, I guess, on both of these two gentlemen. Time-wise...
431, control camera.
Stuart estimates an average of three days. Don says within seven days he can have it back to us, which is still, both of them are much better than what we've been doing.
Did you pull that back? No, it's stuck. Give the little tweezers or something to...
Ventilator.
Hit it with the butter pistol.
Ventilator or a ventilator.
Or a little kid with small fingers. No, it was pretty flush.
The panic button.
Mike might have something.
Put a key on it.
No, it's a special little... What, do you mind?
Stuart, that... Key worked better for cushions. It would be strong.
You gotta get it in.
Oh.
Nothing but to do with...
Where do y'all got an on your own desk?
I think it was the other kind of...
Because we're tired guys, don't do much, really enjoy... Is that making trouble?
Brenda, you want my little bitty Swiss Army knife?
No, you gotta get behind it.
There it goes. We're perfect.
Thank you. All right, we got it. Well, hopefully I won't have to push that again. All right, Nicole.
So I guess that's all of the information I have that you requested, the fees and turnaround time.
These would probably work out very close, the ones by the hour and then by contract pricing, I should say.
Up or down? The only issue that could be different is if, is the size of survey. Something very, very complex, then you're going to have to work an hour, hour and a half for the $25 per COS.
And the only thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Because if that complex is going to be up there one way or the other.
It'll be, it'll be quite a lot. The only thing I can...
Sorry.
I can add to this is, in the past, when I was not collecting the fees upfront, I have four to five surveys that are still just hanging out there where the owners of those surveys did not bring them back into the county for recordation. And so I just, I just changed how I was doing business in my office to where they had to pay me upfront because we did still have to pay the examining land surveyor for those fees. If they're not coming in to record it, we really have no leverage, you know? Even if I send them a bill or something, they can say, "Okay, well, I'm not going to record it. I'm not going to pay for it." Obviously, if they did ever come back in to record those surveys, they would have to pay that fee before it could be recorded. So that's the only problem I see with not collecting upfront. That's the only, the only cog in the mail, I guess I could see for this hourly rate, potentially, would be that we wouldn't be reimbursed. That may never happen. But, you know, we're paying for the service upfront and then having to bill the folks for it in hopes that they come back in. And most of them will because they've already, you know, gone through the process of hiring the surveyor, paying the surveyor, you know, coming current on all of their taxes and doing work, so for them to not pay this small amount may never happen.
We could end up with...
I think they're both well-qualified and everything. I do know Don because he's been here. I know he's done a lot of work for the county. I think he did a lot, I think donated time years ago. So if you're asking me for a recommendation or, I would support Don even though his cellphone just went off when he was...
Nobody ever calls me.
But that's, that's my opinion. I think Mr. Nash is well-qualified too, but knowing of Don, that's my support.
And going back to something that was said earlier, the last thing that we can do and we put the county taxpayers in liability when we start giving jobs to friends. We have got to look at things evenly and that's why we have receipts. That's why we have these numbers. So...
We're not a personal friend. I just know...
You just said that that was the reason for going that direction. I'm just saying, we need to look...
I know his background. I know about him, is what I say.
We need to look at the black and white strictly and only because we hold their pocketbooks in our hands. With that being said, I also agree with Don Schaber as the county surveyor or examining land surveyor because of the solid charges. I think 25 per tract is fair. You don't know how big the survey, or the subdivision could be. It could be five, it could be 150. 125 for the COS is a whole lot cleaner again for the taxpayers because those folks who don't pay or don't record, their services are getting paid by you guys, by all of us collectively. An hourly rate, we have to wait till it's done to take payment. It puts you guys at stronger risk of having to pay bills that somebody else doesn't pay.
That's what Nicole said.
I do agree with you and also would put my, my support on, on Don Schaber. So we should put that in the form of a motion so that we can go ahead and make it official.
Okay, I'll put motion, I mean, point, Don Schaber is, is it land examiner? What's the title we have there?
It's on your agenda and it's examining land surveyor.
I didn't get it on your agenda.
You, you did in your mail and email?
No, no, no emails ever come, but that's why I don't have it.
Examining land surveyor.
Examining land surveyor. I just wanted to get the right title out there.
The second, the motion has been moved and seconded to hire Don Schaber per contract for the examining land surveyor position at $125 per COS, $25 per tract with seven-day turnaround. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries and congratulations.
Thank you.
And Tim, did you have a question or a comment?
Madam Chair, comment. I agree with the decision made here based on the fact that if we were to hire the other party to do our work here in the county, hourly is open-ended. We wouldn't really know for sure how much extensive that could get into a bigger process, leaving the county taxpayers at a disadvantage. So thank you.
All right, thank you. John?
I'd like to make a comment also about this group of surveyors and people in this county, been around for quite a while. I've had a lot of dealings with them and I've never had one that wasn't more than successful and more than rewarding.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate hearing that.
Anything else, Nicole? Not on this issue? All right, Paul?
I'd like to direct the questions to Nicole, if I may?
Absolutely.
Nicole, did, did you get the Olson situation taken care of?
I'm still waiting for their surveyor, Steve Wendell, to come and present that survey to the commission. I just sent him another reminder email of that.
All right, thank you. I've, I've been on vacation and I lost track of what was going on. Thank you.
And we have their COS in our mail, ready to go. As soon as he's here, we'll make it official and your neighbors will be ready to go.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you very much.
And I'm just going to stay right here and then if you don't mind, Brad Campbell, I'll, I can read his letter aloud. Here's three copies here.
All right, just very quickly. Brad Campbell, Meadows Phase Two, proposed major subdivision, request for additional extension of preliminary plot approval. You want to turn?
Sorry. So there's a fourth one for Elaine there. Thank you. And so typically, the developer presents this to the commission, which is why Brad is here, but I'll just read this letter aloud if you don't mind.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. It's addressed to Elaine Gravely, chairperson of the Bradwater County Commissioners, regarding the Meadows subdivision Phase Two, request one-year term extension for completion. Mr. Chairperson, this writing represents my formal request for a one-year extension in order to complete the work necessary to satisfy the terms and conditions for final plot approval of Phase Two, the Meadows subdivision. To date, Double C Ranch has completed the following steps towards final plot approval as per the terms and conditions of the preliminary plot approval order issued September 24, 2007. Number one, engineering work completed and approved. Number two, approach permit received and approach to Montana Highway 284 is installed. Number three, DEQ approval issued September 29, 2008. Number four, roadways rough cut to grade. Number five, electrical service installed. And number six, telephone underground road crossing conduit is installed. Number seven, restrictive covenants ready for incorporation. Number eight, cash and low park land has been paid as required. Remaining construction work for final approval. Number one, installation of finished road gravel. And number two, installation of markers, monuments, and street signs. Thank you for your consideration and please favor my request by your approval. Double C Ranch, signed by L. Bradford Campbell, the managing member.
Thank you. All right. Brad, do you have anything?
I haven't heard that. Open for your questions.
All right.
I have no questions. I mean, as long as you're meeting everything that is required, which apparently you have, so, yeah, I'm fine with the request.
I'll, I'll, now's a market to control. That's what I thought.
Yeah, cross your fingers.
So if it pleases you, we would be very happy if we could have another one-year extension.
All right, we do need to put this to a vote, so it's official in the minutes?
Okay, I'll move for the, what's the, Meadows subdivision Phase Two, the request for the extension.
The second, the motion has been moved and seconded to grant a one-year extension to the Meadows subdivision Phase Two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Congratulations, Brad.
Nicole.
All right, 11:45. It looks like we have no... Oh, hello Bernadette, are you here for a COS?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Excellent, come on up.
This is a family transfer out toward Deep Creek for Christian Chatfield. His children live here and this was his property and for family planning, he's creating a parcel for his daughter and his wife.
What about is this at?
It's out on Lower Deep Creek Road. It used to be the Wickens property.
Oh, okay.
Or I can't remember, what was her mother or maiden name? Macarthur? I think Macarthur. MacArthur. Property. Frank McFadyen, MacArthur.
Yeah.
And it's been through, they're getting DEQ on the three lots, so it's going through the state and it has had approval with, by the examining land surveyor.
And that'll address that egg-exempt issue that...
Yeah, this, yeah, this one never had any agricultural exemption onto it. But they're going to go ahead and go through it all at once just so it's done for future use.
Smart.
Yeah.
I have real objection, as long as they're meeting all the requirements that's needed and...
And we do still put a motion to it that we support the COS.
Yeah, okay, I made a motion to support the COS on, I know in your own name you just said...
Chatfield. Family transfer.
Family transfer, yeah.
Now, second, the motion has been moved and seconded to support the family transfer, transfer for the Chris Chatfield family. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Yeah, I'll wait and sign it now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernadette.
Thank you.
And anything else from you?
No, that's all for today. Thank you very much.
Then we have two minutes and we'll adjourn for lunch. Anything for two minutes, if I can?
Yes.
Okay, John?
The last meeting I was to, anyway. You told Franklin that he had two okay minutes from another meeting to come back through. Was his idea or suggestion put back into the minutes that he didn't agree with?
Everybody offers edits. As long as they are accurate, then they are a part of the minutes. The only thing that wouldn't be included is something that wasn't discussed, wasn't accurate, that kind of thing. So yes, everybody offers suggested edits and those are incorporated into the minutes. And that's why they're emailed out to everybody about a week before.
I know that he had not okayed minutes from a June meeting or something and you said they had to be okayed for the county, or he didn't...
We're under legal obligation to approve minutes within three weeks of the meeting.
Other words, if you don't agree on something, then what?
If it happened in the meeting, it goes in the minutes. If it didn't happen, if it wasn't said, then it doesn't go in the minutes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right. Right, we are at 12 noon. We will recess until 1:30. We will recess until 1:30. Thanks, everyone.